I believe this this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I can go ahead and start by asking for approval of today's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Well, second. I have a motion of second and discussion. Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for approval of the minutes dated May thirty first, June first, and June second.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second and discussion. Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for claims, approval for claims for payment dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty two.
Motion to approve.
Well, second. I have a motion of second and discussion. Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I have a consideration of I R E T S R T endorsement. Chris, I'm gonna go ahead and let you take the floor here.
Sounds good.
You want me to? Sure, come on up.
All right, great.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to be back and, and, and not just in upstate capacity, but looking for capacity with the Rivers Edge Trail Project that I know is, as I caught the attention of many in Harden County, especially in the Stevo Rock, El Dora areas, as we've seen that. The resolution in front of you today is that the next phase of the project, phase one, we'll get to it in a minute with the connection between El Dora and Stevo Rock, but we are beginning the process of looking forward to phase two. And phase two is all about connectivity. We've got a couple of different options that we could have gone with, and the board and with our partners have decided to move forward with trying to open the corridor and connect our communities. And so the State Rec Trail Grant is one that is, comes up every year. We're currently in the midst of a current project and had one on the books, but that should be wrapping up this year with the finishing of phase one. And so this is a, a resolution to apply for state rec trails with an amount of five hundred thousand dollars and for twenty twenty two. Our plan is to, to also secure funding with federal rec trails, and this is also being considered as a part of a Destination Iowa Grant process that Governor Kim Reynolds and they, they had put as a priority and was passed for these type of purposes. The grant will go towards primarily bridge work. The biggest hurdle on our project right now in connecting all of our communities is the South Fork River Bridge outside of Gifford. And the total budget for all of the bridges in between, in between Gifford and Union, including the South Fork, would be estimated at one point five million dollars at this point in time to, to, to do. And so that's our, our estimated budget, and this would be a part of that. There is a, there is always a matching element with any of these grants, and we look to secure federal rec trails as well as the other pools of grants and, and giving gifts out there to do those matches like we've done in the past. And from the standpoint of the next phase, it's opening up, completing these bridges. And when we do that, this trail will be open in the rough without being paid fully, but open for safe passage all the way from Stevo to Union if we complete this next phase of the project.
Lance, questions? Same ones I always have. Any grants you apply for? It's open for everything. I know you guys choose for the bicycles, that's your choice of the mission, but any grants that we apply for could be used for ATVs, snowmobiles, horses, anything.
Yes, it's a transportation corridor, and it's just, you know, how do we, how do we safely move different user groups up and down that corridor? And at this point in time, pedestrian and, and bicycles, but we continue to have conversations on how do we include other user groups and do it safely? And so a lot of that will be, yeah, this, this current phase will give us a lot of information on, on, on usage and how do we navigate those waters to when it gets open.
And again, you're still not asking for money from the county.
At this point in time, no, this grant is, is not in that capacity to, from, from that aspect. Any of those dollars that possibly would be there in the future would go into any kind of matching aspects, so.
Renee?
Do we have any other questions?
Taylor, anything? I know Taylor provided some oversight the last, on this last part of the project, and I appreciate that we can have that public-private partnership and provide that oversight. Thank you, Taylor. Any other questions for Chris? All right, excellent.
Do you want a trail update?
Sure, if you want to give a.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think on that same note, BJ really appreciates, yeah, Taylor and engineers department there and helping oversight, that's, it's an area of expertise that our board doesn't have, and I think that, that helps in that capacity to make sure the project's moving smoothly. The project is, is moving very smoothly up to this point. It was, you know, we were, we were very excited to see how fast things were going. We had a very, very, I was worded, the, the climate was very good here spring to get a lot of work done. We ran into some supply chain issues with the project, and so I want to reinforce to the public, the trail's currently closed and it's still in a closed state. And it's because there is some safety issues, and it primarily around bridges. Fencing still is going up on those bridges, and they're, they're large enough drop offs and they create a sizable safety hazard. And so we will let the public know when this section of trail will be open for public use, but please mind the barriers and the road close signs at this time. In terms of that, that timeline, we, you know, if we get fencing here, you know, in short order, we, you know, our hope and goal is to have this open as soon as possible for usage. We would be planning a ribbon cutting and a grand opening of that more likely in this fall, and we'll let the public and, and everyone know. So we come out and celebrate together this big achievement. On the other, the south side of the trail in Marshalltown, they are also looking at Destination Iowa and, and continuing their process, progress towards completing five bridges and additional about two to three miles of paving there. I think one, one area to note, the city of Marshalltown did pledge two hundred thousand dollars out of their budget towards that project and the completion. And also, you know, just from a, a public and a standpoint, I've heard overwhelmingly the, the excitement in our communities on this. And, and just wanting to know what those next steps are and how fast are we gonna get there? So we're, we're excited to see folks on it and enjoying it and, 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 yeah, really, really pleased and as a board of where we're at, and we know we got a lot of work to do to take care of the next phase, so.
Thank you. And I know in some passing conversations with Mayor Greer from Marshalltown that, you know, things are progressing and there's a lot of excitement and anticipation moving forward, so.
Absolutely.
Yep, thanks. All right, I can ask for consideration of the I R E T S R T endorsement.
Motion to approve.
No, second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration of the S R T resolution.
Make a writ, motion to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Jolene?
Lance?
Aye.
Renee? Aye. BJ?
Aye, motion carries.
I do have a question. Do you know when this is gonna be awarded, what we?
Yeah, this application's a July first application. It typically awarded by fall, September or so.
So a pretty short turnaround for a grant.
It is, yeah, so we'll know where we fall on that, on the line, but year or day at that point in time as well, so, yeah.
Next item I have is consideration of a credit card limit increase request from emergency manager, or actually Emergency Management Commission is asking for this. Emergency Management Coordinator Creighton is attending a conference, and right now, our accounting practices keep our employee credit cards fairly low, and just to make the accounting process, that's much simpler. Raising the limit on Emergency Management Coordinator Creighton's credit card was requested and passed unanimously by the Harden County Emergency Management Commission. So I would entertain a motion for increasing that limit on his card.
Make a motion to approve the limit, increase on the Emergency Management Credit Card.
I will second.
I have a motion, a second discussion. What was the dollar amount, Thomas?
They said ten dollars.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Taylor, you want to come up and?
Yeah. Just the one.
All right. We've got one bid for fuel.
Yep.
And you'll open that and then?
Yeah, over it and then next week.
Bring it back.
Okay. Yep, perfect. So this is from Advantage FS, who has our current contract as well.
No supply issues or anything like that with them?
No.
And we've been doing business with them for quite a while, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, prices. But it looks like for fuel, they did seven point eight cents over delivery, and for propane, they did twelve point nine cents. So in all, that should cost the county, judging by our estimates, obviously, this isn't exactly what we get. It costs us about eleven thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty nine. And this is for us and conservation together.
Okay.
What was propane again?
Twelve point nine cents, yep. So that's what we pay extra per gallon.
Okay.
We pay their, their price that they paid plus twelve point nine cents, and for fuel will be seven point eight cents.
True. All right, next item I have is considerations, plastic license for the Kind Light Country Club.
Finally, country club's class C liquor license.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
It's vulnerable.
Yep, effective July seventeenth, twenty twenty two expires July sixteenth, twenty twenty three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consideration memorandum of understanding between Harden County and Central Iowa Community Services. This is a annual consideration of the shared services between Harden County and the Central Iowa Community Services Mental Health Region.
Make a motion to approve the consideration of memorandum of understanding between Harden County, C I C S.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second and discussion. Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is consideration of a utility permit, excuse me, from Interstate Power Light Company, UT twenty-two dash zero one zero.
Let's approve.
A second.
I have a motion, a second, a discussion. Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have is consideration of requests for compromise and assignment of Harden County tax sales certificates. Michelle, would you like to speak or I've spoke with Daryl this morning, so?
Yeah, I guess we need to see if Chris is on to verify a few things.
Okay.
In the request, there wasn't actually dollar amount specified, so we were thinking that we needed to clear that up before we could make, before you could make an actual decision.
Sure, so after talking with County Attorney Meyer, his suggestion was to have you negotiate with Chris and include Daryl in that conversation, bring us back hopefully a mutually agreed offer in the incoming weeks. Is that what you're hoping for, Michelle?
Yeah, I think if we want to see a.
Sure.
Yeah, she's got her hand raised. We weren't a hundred percent positive on what the reduction of interest was. Was it a full reduction of interest or partial?
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, sorry, I've been listening. So basically, what we've been doing is simply asking for a reduction of interest on the tax certificate, and then we've been paying all the principal funds, all the fees that are associated with it. And then a lot of times, if there's any special assessments, we pay those in full. Plus, we pay the current taxes that are owed, is how we've been looking at it. But I'll need to confirm with you, Michelle, what those monies are to verify that. But that's typically, you guys will be county thirty-one that we've done this in, and that's typically what we've been working with the boards with, and they've been approving.
So, Chris, you said the full payment of the specials plus the interest?
Yeah, depending on what they are and if, you know, this, if the city, so if there's like tons of specials, sometimes the cities will work with us on the interest that's owed. We always want to make sure that everybody gets their principal monies back. I mean, that's basically the taxes, had they been paid on time, you guys would have gotten all that. So the interest is the only piece that we look at to reduce if possible. And for sure on the tax certificate, but depending on the amount of specials, a little bit there maybe, but not normally, so.
I'll be in touch.
Does that work with you, Chris?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, we want to work with everybody on this, so please let me know what works for you, Michelle, and then we can make a final decision from there.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris, take care.
You're, you're welcome, bye.
Okay, so I can ask for a motion to direct Treasurer Ike Meyer to work with Chris Newhouse to get some numbers for the board and return them at a future meeting for consideration after conferring with Attorney Meyer as well.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I have acknowledgement of receipt of animal feeding operation construction permit Harden Buckeye three, section three, Buckeye Township.
Make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of, of the animal feeding operation construction permit.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, Jess Sheridan has provided a timeline for this site, and we need to set a time and date for a public hearing for Buckeye three, section three, Buckeye Township. Her suggestion, and I think it's a great suggestion, is July sixth, twenty twenty two at nine oh two AM in the large conference room of the Harden County Courthouse.
Make a motion to set the date and time at July sixth, twenty twenty two at nine oh two AM.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? One thing, the application will be uploaded and available for viewing online in.
Yes, it should be also available in the auditorium, if anybody wanted to view it in person. Or they can also just contact me and I'll send it to them.
Yeah, I think a scan copy.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Will public comments be available on Zoom or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item for consideration is approval of the salaries for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget year.
That wasn't someone's worked out for six months. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the salaries for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion?
Yeah, it's challenging. The rate of inflation and everything, I know the numbers are going up, and we're still trying to be on conservative side. But comparable to other counties and stuff, I think we are on the lower side of a lot of range. I do appreciate the employees for being here. This is where we come in.
I'd echo the same thing, Lance. There are some areas of departments where we are limited by the funds that can be spent on wages, and when you get to that limit, if you want to increase the wages in those areas, then you have to either reduce the number of personnel, the quality of service, the quantity of service, or a little of both. And so when you have federal and state entities dictating funding sources and funding formulas, it makes it that much more difficult. And so living within our means is also imperative as we, you know, go forward. The, the job market is just as tough here in the county as it is out in, you know, the public sector as well, or in the private sector, so. I, I think we sharpened our pencil during budget hearings. I know that we had handful of members of the public involved in that, and our department heads have done everything they've can to remove fluff while trying to do the best to recruit and retain quality employees and talent that aren't a dime a dozen. We don't have the, the largest workforce pool to select from here, and so it's a matter of working again within our means. So those would be my comments on the wage adjustments going in from year to year. Renee, anything?
I don't fully agree, but.
I, I'm, and that's okay, I mean.
Some comments I received and also some of the salaries, I think, are getting a little high, so just my personal opinion.
No, and I can appreciate that. Yeah, it's, it's okay that we can agree to disagree and, and so.
Not here at all to all agree.
So, all right. With that being said, this would be the time for any discussion, additional discussion on anything that, any changes or anything like that, that see that would be imperative going forward.
Just remember where this taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
That, that we do provide a service for.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, roll call vote, Jolene?
Lance?
Aye.
Renee? Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have for discussion is consideration of Harden County Wellness Program. You're not gonna let Miss Bo come on down.
Yeah, come on up too.
Yeah.
So we started talking about this a couple of weeks ago, and Renee was gone, so you guys said, okay, let's take what? So I brought Deanna too, and we added on there, the really, the only things I changed was I took Allison's name off and just put mine for now on the bottom. And then I kind of mentioned what the programs actually were that we were gonna look at. I still don't think like we figured out which classes we're going to get.
Right, we've got some in the works, but just haven't finalized them, so we didn't put them on the poster yet. Just a little history, we met with Lance was there.
I was not.
Yeah, BJ was not, and because we had been with ISAC at Mercy managing it, and we were paying them and we didn't think we were getting the return out of what we were paying them. And the whole incentive program was money that we paid to employees, and that wasn't working out so well for Rebecca's bookkeeping and everything. Lance had asked if we could do a maybe incentive by giving some monies towards an insurance payment a month, and so Becca looked into that, and that was a nightmare. And so that's why we kind of looked around and came up with the some, you know, if the employee meets certain criteria and everything, and one of the big ones, BJ, you had said at one time that you wanted to see the wellness exam to carry up really high point value if you're doing points or whatever to get to that incentive thing. And so we, we incorporated that into it, and just, we would just want to have healthy employees, and we don't want to make this real easy for them, they gotta work at it a little bit, but then if they meet certain goals, then they would get a wellness day off, so.
Okay. I believe in the program. I believe an ounce of prevention is a whole lot cheaper than a pound of cure.
Agreed.
And I've heard in the past that, you know, some people have been reluctant to get those annual physicals, not because there's any incentive, but now that we're really kind of preaching the wellness and the proactive behaviors that, you know, there have been changes in lifestyle and behaviors and, and choices, and so I do think that's great, and it's one of those things where, kind of going back to our employees recruiting and retaining good people, I think it's a matter also of valuing their.
Healthy people.
Healthy people. The last thing Taylor needs is, or anybody needs is unhealthy people that are sick or, or, you know, have chronic or terminal illness that could have been prevented with a wellness exam or a mammogram, a colonoscopy, something like that, that could bring, you know, something significant to light because we don't want to lose a member of our family, so.
And over the years, I've got to put a plug in for the wellness program because it has caught some of those things very early that people didn't even realize what's going on and kind of helped them work through that.
Those would be my comments, Renee?
No, I'm, I'm all for it.
Lance?
Well, this, this is, you're asking for a wellness day now, taking consideration that all this time, it's, it's all or none.
You're making it or you don't, correct?
Yep, you don't get half a day, and all this is done during your own personal time, not during county time.
The only thing would be that class.
A class.
When we get it, yeah.
Otherwise, personal time. And this is offered just through Harden County, not through all the other entities that are in our insurance pool because the benefits that are being thrown back are coming from the county and not from the pool.
Yeah, they have to do their own.
Just want to point all that out.
And I think for the record, Beth approved this and Beth is, and Becca have also looked at making sure that through an audit, everything would be work, and I think this is a pretty standard practice across the area, that actually probably across the state. So those things have been checked out.
And the department has been aware of all this going on, so it's okay with each department. Might, might be given a day away. I know it's stuff in your department.
And just self-managing it, you know, we're not paying anybody else to be managers. Taylor is.
The tally sheet.
I think I can manage.
All right, thank you for the work you do, and I appreciate your, your input and the impact that we're having on our employees. That being said, I entertain a motion to consider the suggestions of Harden County Wellness Committee's commitment to a wellness program.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have, I've got a couple of changes to status in the Secondary Roads Department. The first is Allison Lake, it's a resignation effective June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two as the office manager at a rate of eighteen fifteen an hour.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, a discussion.
I'll just say she was awesome. She got offered another job that's plenty more money than we could ever compete with, so I'm happy for her, yeah, great employee, I enjoyed her.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next one is the retirement of Terry Clemmons, Secondary Roads Motor Grade Foreman at a rate of twenty-three eighteen an hour, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Terry's been with the county since July twenty-fourth of nineteen ninety-five.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
So thank you for all these years of service.
I can't wait to see him around more, and I'm sure his family will be glad to have him around as well, so. Well, that being said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I have a single change of status in the County Attorney's Office. It is a change status for Assistant County Attorney Christopher Klein effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. He's resigning, his last day will be today, the fifteenth, at a rate of seventy-four thousand dollars a year.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? I really appreciate Chris coming in during a transition time in the County Attorney's Office and really appreciated the commitment to the public that he's made. He's, you know, one of those unsung heroes that goes unnoticed, and I know that he's an integral part of the County Attorney's Office and appreciate his time and commitment to Harden. And I know that he's an integral part of the county attorney's office and appreciate his time and commitment to Harden County. All those in favor of approving the status change, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item I have is a change of status for, first one in the sheriff's office is Brennan Resack, actually, sorry, nope, wrong one. Sophia Lucas is a part-time dispatcher. She's resigned effective June tenth. She is being paid at a rate of eighteen seventy an hour, resigning. She will be getting married and moving to Wisconsin. So commuting probably isn't an option there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Final change status from the sheriff's office is the resignation of Joshua Nelson. He was a sergeant in sheriff's office. He's been here since December twenty-seventh, two thousand and four. He was being paid a rate of thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents an hour. And he is, as it's been reported, and I think he just started yesterday, the day before, he accepted the chief's position at the Iowa Falls Police Department.
I'm going to make that motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Which one does close there?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm glad that we were able to keep him in the county and appreciate everything he's done in the office. And I know that we always encourage professional development, and I think this is a great move, and he'll be a huge asset for years to come in the city of Iowa Falls. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And next have a change status for this conservation word in conservation department. I have effective June sixth, twenty twenty-two Brennan Resack resignation. He was a conservation technician at seventeen ninety-nine an hour. Brennan has accepted a position with the D N R as a wildlife biologist.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Again, wish Brennan well. I know that this was the position with the D N R was something he had been working towards, and again, don't like to lose talent, but also want to encourage that professional and personal development. So thank him for his service. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is consideration of Auditor Peter's monthly report for the month of May.
Make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report for May.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have for consideration is Recorder Cantor's monthly report for the month of May.
I'll make a motion to approve reverse report.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do you want to speak?
Um, I just want to bring up a couple of points. We have, we received some tallies from Iowa Land Records, and we accept the electronic e-submissions, and we're in the top fourteen counties out of ninety-nine for processing many submission documents, so we're proud of that factor. And also, the other thing is boats, they can still be registered. They were supposed to be registered by April thirtieth, but the D N R moved the penalty phase to July first. So if I were going to take my boat to a public water system, I definitely have it registered. So just wanted to get that out there to people that they can still register.
What's, what's the penalty, Lori?
Five dollars.
Okay.
Always five dollars.
Always five.
Whatever.
Yeah, but if you were cited operating your boat on a public waterway, this location is considerably more than five dollars.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Lori. The next item I have is consideration of Sheriff McDaniel's report for the month of May.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, I have other department heads here. Michelle, anything else to add?
There's still time to pay your taxes if you haven't yet.
Tax sales coming up.
Tax sales coming up. Monday, the twentieth is tax sales. You want to have your taxes paid in office by Friday. You can still pay online up until midnight of the nineteen, so.
Okay.
Um, just want to get that done. Saves you a lot of money and all the entities need the dollars.
Yeah. And have you started taking registration for bidders yet?
Yeah, our deadline was yesterday.
Okay, how many bidders did you have?
I believe we have two hundred and.
It's okay.
Over two hundred. Two hundred bidders.
Okay. Sounds good. Taylor, anything else?
Very exciting night, so I'd like to thank my employees, you know, they answer their phones at three in the morning and they get out there to take care of these trees that are down, so.
Okay.
Were there quite a few across the county?
I'll say. They're still coming in. Now that people on the gravel roads, we're getting those reports too. Last night was mostly just highways.
Jolene? Michael? Counselor?
I wish Chris well. He's going to Blackout County to prosecute over there, so. Wish him well. I know that's a little different environment up there, so he'll do well. Excellent.
Jessica?
Yeah. So just a reminder, get your building permits. It's in your best interest, I promise. Like, for example, and I'm going to put together a document about this because it's just, we're just missing too much stuff, but like, I get an email yearly from a pipeline that's already in Harden County. And they want to know what development has happened. We're in a certain area of that. It's for your own safety. So I can let them know so that they, you know, are prepared for something that happened for the pipeline. So it's in your best interest to get a building.
And call for one more.
And call, call before you dig.
Yeah. Even no matter how big or minor it is, yep.
Eight one.
There are eight one one. Lance?
Chris fundraiser, if anybody's interested, who do they contact?
Yeah, they can still reach out to to me primarily, and we'll get you in contact with with one of the board members. And we'll have some things in the works for, you know, a large fundraising event as we get closer to ribbon cutting and all that. We're, we're in the works of the very, very appropriate celebration for what we're doing. And so that's a few months away. We're looking at early fall for that. And so, you know, September, October and there I can get to get this open and then be ready for that, so, yep.
Thank you. Okay, Renee? All right. That being said, I can ask for adjournment.
We'll adjourn.
Second.
No discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.